Welcome to the Charlotte City Council Business Meeting for October the 12th. I now call this meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is being held as a virtual meeting in accordance to the Electronic Meeting Statute, the requirements of notice and access, and the minutes are being met electronically. Public and the media and anyone else would like to view this meeting. You can do it on the government channel, the city's Facebook page, or on the city's YouTube page. I'd like to have the council introduce themselves. We'll start with those that are participating virtually, and then we'll start with Mr. Eggleston as we get, or is it easier to do it just as we always have? What do you guys think?
All right, let's start with our virtual participants, and then we'll start at the front of the room and continue back.
Raxton Winston at large.
Renee Johnson, District 4.
Jennifer Brenner at large.
Man Newton, District 5.
All right, thank you, everyone. Mr. Eggleston.
Larkin Eggleston, District 1.
Dark Bakari, District 6.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Ed Driggs, District 7.
Victoria Watlington, District 3.
Julia I...
May.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Marla Protem.
No, no. Julia Izelt, Mayor Protem, and at large.
Bye Lyles, Mayor.
James Mitchell at large in the doghouse.
And now we're also joined by our staff. We'll start with the city clerk.
Stephanie Kelly, City Clerk.
Mr. Baker.
Patrick Baker, City Attorney.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Thank you. We begin our meeting with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is intended to solemnize our proceedings. We recognize that there's a great deal of diversity in our community around religion, including those without faith, a religious faith at all. Tonight, Councilmember Winston will provide us our thoughtful invocation for the meeting tonight, and following that immediately, Councilmember Ashneera will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Winston.
Thank you, Mayor. Today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so I would like us to recognize that whether we are in the government center or participating virtually or watching this at home, more than likely if you're in the Charlotte area, you are on land that was, is the historical home of the Katala Nation. So let us think about the sacrifices that the people of the Katala Nation have made over the several hundred years so that we may do the business of the city of Charlotte today. Let us recognize them in our actions, and as we try to provide restorative justice for all people of the city of Charlotte, I hope that we do not forget our Indigenous people as we do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. We will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At the beginning of our meeting, we begin with a review, working primarily on items that are coming to us that we need to be briefed on in advance, and tonight we have several of those items. But first, let's go to the consent items to see if there were any staff questions about the consent items. These are items that are on our agenda that have already been funded or approved in a plan, and we are actually doing implementation of them. And so I'm going to ask if there were any council members that had questions. Marie, did we have any? Miss Harris, did you have any? We did not have any questions from the council. Is there anyone that has thought of something that they want to ask before we proceed?
Mayor, do, let me... I apologize. Go ahead, Mayor.
That's okay. You want to... Well, let me ask this question. Is there anyone that has a comment that they would like to make about any one of the consent items before I... Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On Gen item number 24, it talks about sewer service installation, and I know it's a $6 million opportunity, it's going to the lowest bidder. My quest for Ms. Charles is, in the past, she has gotten very creative on opportunities like this, and so I was wondering, is there a workforce development initiative that could take place on this opportunity? And the reason why I kind of inquired about it, it is a large money of $6 million, so I just want to make sure there's some community benefits we can derive from this opportunity.
All right. So we'll have Ms. Charles come back at the end of this session and address your question, Mr. Mitchell. It's a good one. So is, let me ask of council, is there anyone that would like to comment on any consent item? I don't see anyone on the screen. Is there any... I wanted to just note that when we get to the motion, staff has asked us to remove item number 31 and item number 40. So is there any item in the consent items that you'd like to see as a separate vote? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one requiring a separate vote, we'll now go to the manager for the action review. Again, these are items that will be coming onto our agenda at some point in the future.
So, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have three items under the action review, and we do not have a closed session for this evening. So the Safe Charlotte Initiatives, I'll give you a brief update of where we are with that. We have the Civil Line Public Meetings Report out, that Ty will come in and present, and then there's a discussion about the city council meeting calendar. And those are the items that we have for the action review tonight, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Jones, you want to walk right into the Safe Charlotte Initiatives report?
Sure, I will do that. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I will be brief. What we have right now is really trying to bring everybody up to speed of where we are in this process. If you recall, will recall, last week, in this room, we spent time talking about the various committees and the work that was done in the committees around what we call Safe Charlotte, safety and accountability for everyone. I think the timeline is the best example of where we are tonight. So, again, the fifth, we had the recommendations that came out of the strategy session. I have Federico Rios in here tonight because there was a community input group meeting on Thursday, and I would like for him to give you a little bit of a sense of what happened at that meeting, mainly because we're going to have a meeting tomorrow from the, with input from the community input group, but I wanted you to get a little bit of flavor of that tonight. And then all of that rolls into the 23rd of October, where we will have a report that you will have in your briefing packet, and then a public comment and hopefully a council action on the 26th. But before I go into a little bit of an update, I would like Federico to give you a flavor of last Thursday.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, manager and staff. We gathered the community input group on short notice based on the request of council. We were able to get 14 individuals present for that call. Overwhelmingly, we received information from them stating that they were very, very much pleased with the recommendations that had been put forward, were excited and cautiously optimistic to see those things potentially get voted through, and that more than anything, they wanted to continue to be engaged. There was a deep desire to continue to see the process through, not only offer recommendations, but ensure that their voice is heard throughout the implementation process, and to connect with the county on the larger body of work related to treating violence as a public health crisis.
Any questions for Mr. Rios?
So, thank you, Federico, and...
Is there someone's hand up?
Sorry, I raised my hand, but...
Mr. Winston?
Just wanted to give one comment. I have followed up with a couple of the group members after, and I just want to remind everybody, and this was clear from conversations that I got, even as we get through the implementation process, that this is just, this is one step. This is one step, and we're going to have to continue to make steps to get to the end goal. And I think we should do as much work as we can to keep this group engaged and really kind of critically look at what role this particular structure can play as we perpetually try to reimagine what our role in community safety looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Mr. Jones?
And I totally agree, Mayor, members of council. I don't think we would be where we are right now without the help of the community input group. They kept us accountable, as well as gave us just tremendous ideas. So what I'll do is just very quickly talk about the recommendations from last week, and then make sure that we are fine where we are right now with those recommendations. And then there are three issues that were still outstanding that I would like to get guidance from the council. Our goal is, again, to have a report that can be approved by the council, that becomes that living, breathing document that holds us all accountable, and a lot of the feedback that I've heard up to this point is that while it looks like we're in the, headed in the right direction, there's the whole concept of making sure that we can deliver upon what's in these recommendations. So just pretty quickly, from last week, we talked about redirecting certain police calls to non-sworn units. We divided those into two areas. One would be those higher-risk mental health, and two would be those lower-risk mental health. So I wanted to just go a little bit more in detail. So for instance, those higher-risk mental health calls goes back to our Community Policing Crisis Response Team, launched last April, excuse me, April 2019. Eight officers, six clinicians responded to over 2,800 calls for service, and approximately half were able to be referred to services. We diverted 62% of community members involved in these calls for service from jail or psychiatric hospitals. These issues were resolved on the scene. So just a little bit of teaser as we go through, we'd like to be able to double the number of individuals that we, the clinicians that we have in terms of our Community Policing Crisis Response Team for those high-risk calls. In terms of those lower-risk calls, we want to move away from just talking about a pilot, but go right into a cahoots-like model where we are able to address those lower risks. And I'll give you some examples. So if we think about what has occurred, CAHoots has been around for 30 years, and as we looked at some of the other cities that have used it, we've seen CAHoots being able to handle about 15% of the call volume for the Eugene Police Department. In 2019, only 1% of the 24,000 calls they handled required police backup. So again, we think we have an opportunity here. As we move forward, we also wanted to focus officer time on their core roles. We have a total average time currently spent on those priority five calls is about 66,882 staff hours per year. We believe that there is opportunity there. But here's the, don't say but, here's what we know what we're dealing with going in. We need some help with this assessment. So this is where we would bring in an outside assessor to help develop comprehensive recommendations around how we could convert some of these low-risk sworn duties to non-uniform units. And then in terms of recommendations for external analysis, can we even go back one? We believe there are two pieces. One is we'll engage a consultant to conduct the external analysis as we start to talk about police civilian contacts and police calls for responses, and that's not the universe of this, but those are the examples. And then also in terms of our youth programs, I think you will recall during the committee discussions, we went as far as to say, let's not start populating the FY 2022 budget with programs without being able to better evaluate what those programs do. And then lastly, training, recruitment, and residency. It's kind of interesting, when we start to look at this, there's about 550 or so officers who live within the city, which represents about 34% of the officers. And currently, outside of what we would do for any other city employee, we have a program that provides a 2,500 one-time stipend, if you will, to move into the city. We know we can do better, especially if we're able to concentrate on some of our corridors of opportunity. So we're working with Pam Whiteman and her team to develop an incentive program. And then lastly, in terms of what we discussed last week, we talked a great deal about this million dollars that would be set aside for violence prevention efforts from many of the grassroots organizations. We're smart enough to know that we should start off by having discussions with them. So what we have planned, I believe this was Councilman Graham's recommendation, is to have a summit, and we were going to talk about jumpstart grants. We'll talk about all of it during the summit, and we'll get feedback before any of the funds are allocated. So that left, leaves us with the three issues that were remaining, and I think, based on where we are, we may be in a decent place, but I want to make sure that council gives us direction about the legislative authority that relates to some of the policy decisions. So we talked about subpoena power, requesting that, and that is actually in the Intergovernmental Committee right now. Expanding the role of the Civil Service Board to handle appeal, appeals, that is, requires a legal review, and if I got the feedback correctly from last Monday, limiting cash bail process would be something that would be considered or proposed to go before the CJAC to review. So didn't want to let two weeks go by and have some plan that's before you without making sure that we're in a good place, not only with the recommendations, but how we would handle these last three. So Mayor, and council, if there are any questions, I would answer those, and I think that Chief Jennings is also in the building.
Are there any questions? And Chief Jennings, as well as Mr. Rios are here, and so any questions here, so...
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Marcus, can you go back to the slide that talks about the response to mental health calls?
Yes.
And so for higher-risk mental health calls, an officer go out and help someone who's trained from the crisis response team. Is that correct? Is that an officer and a social worker?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so it's a social worker and a CIT officer, correct?
The co-responder model, yes.
Okay. And then the lower-risk mental health calls, is officer responding, or is that just a social worker or a mental health professional responding?
Well, so Councilmember Johnson, that's what we're going to work through with that. There are some models out there like STARS and CAHoots. Our goal is to see to what extent those can be calls that are diverted from an officer going to begin with.
Because the county has that 24-hour crisis line where the mental health professionals go out 24... Would it be an option for us to support that or to collaborate with the county to increase that capacity?
Yes, that could be one of the options, yes.
Okay. And then I also got an email from Chief Jennings I was really excited about. Let me find it. There's a website that the CNPD has where residents can voluntarily enroll in a program to flag their address if there's someone in their household who's in a vulnerable population, such as with a brain injury or mental illness, or developed mentally disabled or hearing loss or anything. How will that information tie in to these calls?
So I may have to ask Chief Jennings to step in for that one?
Well, Ms. Johnson, we'll get Chief Jennings in here towards, as the next part at least, not immediately.
Okay.
Can you hear me? He's...
Okay. Who's, who's, who's on, who's...
This is Chief Jennings. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Did you hear the question? Ms. Johnson?
I did, yes. I'm sorry, I was trying to get audio so I could answer it, but yeah, so what she's referring to is the Safe Outcomes Program that we rolled out last week, that on our website, you can actually register a loved one who might have, who might have a... have, who might have a certain response as far as police, when police respond, whether it's a traumatic brain injury, or mental health issues, or just special needs for someone when the police are responding. And what that does, it allows us, when we get a call for service at that address, or with that individual, it gives us the opportunity to let that officer know, like, there may be something to where an individual might have to, needs a special response from that officer, and that officer will have that information prior to even arriving on the scene. So there's a lot of, lot of great things that can be done with that, that, that it just requires to get the information out there to make sure that people know that they can register their loved ones. And we just rolled that out within the last couple of weeks.
Chief, I wanted to ask, could, could the officers also flag those households if they've gone out and responded, and they see that it would be helpful for them to actually know that in the future? Would that be possible, or is it just the registration by the family's permission, or the owner's permission?
Yeah, the Safe Outcomes is strictly a voluntary registration with the families of the individuals, individual that, that requires a special response when it, when it comes to police. Now, we do also have the ability that we had for several years, that we can flag an address that will let an officer be aware of certain situations that, that they're, when they do a response. The issue with that is, you're only flagging the address, and sometimes, as we know, people will move, or that address, you may be going to that address, but it may not be dealing with someone who might have, be having a mental health crisis, or any other type of situation.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Chief, could you just repeat what the website is, or if people want to look it up, how do they find it?
If you, if somebody looks it up on CNPD.org, on our main webpage, you can see a series of tabs on the lower right side. And if you look at, if you scroll down to that, you'll see Safe Outcomes. Once you click on Safe Outcomes, you will be able to fill out a form, basically, that will, that will give us all the information that we need, and allow for their loved ones, or anyone, to be able to fill out anything that they feel like the police need to know, in the event that we have to respond, or deal with this individual.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Ms. Johnson, have you, do you have other questions?
Well, I mean, just as a disability advocate, this is like a dream come true. So thank you, Chief, for this program, and thank your officers. But I do have a question logistically, how that will work. So if a call comes in, and they're registered with the Safe Outcomes, that will be flagged, and then will you all respond based on the information in the system and the type of call?
Yeah, it's, so it really, it doesn't matter what type of call it is. When the officer gets the, gets the call for service at his computer in the car, that document that was filled out, everything that that officer needs to know, will pop up on their screen. So they'll have it even prior to going into the, going to the call for service. So they'll be, they'll have an opportunity to review it, see if there's a special response that's needed. Dispatchers can also look at and see if it's a call for service that needs a, either our CPCRT, or a Crisis Intervention Team officer, to take the response based on the call for service as well. So have a lot of different options and things that we can look at. But I think it, it makes everyone safer to be able to have that information prior to going to the, and having an encounter with an individual that we need to know. So very, obviously encourage everyone that, that feels like there's a need. We do vet those that feel like there's a need for a special response for police, based on an individual that, that, that Safe Outcomes is, is a good way to ensure that we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Jones, I wanted to follow up to the three items that you said require legislative authority. Are there any questions about that, or the direction that the manager and staff are taking?
Mr. Winston has a question.
I'm sorry. Mr. Winston? I'm sorry, Mr. Winston. I just got you, that you have a question for the chief?
No worries. Well, I, I guess a question slash comment, as it relates to the expanded Community Policing Crisis Response Team. I think the CPCRT is, was a bold investment and experiment, to be quite honest, that City Council and CNPD have taken on over the past couple of years. And I'm glad that we're looking to expand it. As we go forward on it, I would suggest that City Council, CNPD, and the public take this opportunity to kind of debrief on what has been our experience over the past couple of years. After the events on Betis Ford Road, at the mass shooting this, this summer, this was, this was something that came up in our discussions, in the session that we had with Major Robinson over there in Metro Division. And after that, I had some folks that actually have been clinicians with this program reach out to me, and we had a pretty big conversation. You know, while they, they were very encouraged by the steps that we're taking, I, what we have to understand is that, including CPCRT in our first responders' calls, is, is, is a massive change of culture to law enforcement officers. And, and that can't just be done by inserting clinicians, or putting training into it. So as we try to get the highest and best use of this, I think before we go there, I think we need to, to, to hear from the clinicians, hear from the officers, in honestly a public forum, so that we can understand what has been working well, and what needs to be working better. I certainly believe that we have the ability to fix some of the things that aren't quite there yet with it, and that this will be an important tool. But I would encourage the manager and the chief of police to find a way that we, as Council, can learn a little bit more about what has, what has and hasn't been happening, and we can have that public dialogue to make this successful moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Is there anyone else, Ms. Johnson? All right. So I just wanted to check in again. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I just had a quick comment, and I wanted to jump in and extend my gratitude to the chief for the Safe Outcomes Program. As many of you know, this is an issue that's near and dear to me, and I truly believe that this program, in conjunction with, with the CPCRT program...
Remember again, this is a 26-mile, 27-station light rail project going from Starlins in Union County through City, Mecklenburg, all the way to Belmont and Gaston. I want to be able to give you kind of a detailed presentation over what we've been doing with the community for the last few weeks. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy, who will do the presentation. But John Lewis and I will be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. Just to introduce myself, my name is Andy Mock. I'm the Senior Project Manager for the Link Silverline Project. I've been with CATS for nearly 20 years. So really thankful to be working on this project after being able to deliver the Blue Line and Blue Line extensions, and looking forward to delivering this Silverline Project. So just to kind of step back to where we started, this public engagement process in this early phase of the Silverline Project, the first phase of this project is really about public engagement, stakeholder input, and alignment refinement. And what I mean by alignment refinement is narrowing down the LPA vision of a big fat purple line to really the project that we're going to put forward. And a big part of that is stakeholder engagement. So when we started this process, we, you know, back in the March timeframe, we planned these, all these public meetings, and we actually were able to hold two public meetings, which were focused on educating the public to what is the Silverline, and how are we going to do this? Well, right, we got two meetings done, and then the pandemic struck, and we had the punt. And we had to pivot, and we pivoted to more of a community virtual kind of approach, where we were, you know, meeting, we were doing online narrated videos of project staff doing presentations, and meeting with community groups, anyone who would take our call. We would, we would meet with them, and give them an overview of the project, and educate them to what is the project. So really, because the project's so big, Ty kind of put his finger on it. This project is so massive, it's so big, it's 26 miles long, and it's really hard for anyone to get their head around. So because of that, we kind of broke up the project into six, what we call focus areas. So that's the way that we kind of structured all of our public engagement, as the best way to actually get people's input. And we broke that up, these, these focus areas, into six individual meetings that we had, that we just wrapped up, the last one on September 28. In concert with the Federal Transit Administration, we also entered what's called early scoping. I'll talk a little more about that later. But each meet, each meeting, each night, had its own focus area, and each presentation, all those are available, they're all virtual, and they're all available online. If you go to our YouTube channel, you can see the whole thing, live Q and A, the live presentation. So if you'd like to see kind of what, how it went down, you're welcome to go there and see that. Let's see if I can, that's going to work. So this is our, kind of our public engagement slide. One big takeaway here is, the round-two public engagement effort is still open through the federal, through the federal early scoping process, and it's open till Wednesday. And so my plea and my, my request is for folks to take a look at this, take a look at it before Wednesday, and do the survey, review our material. I think it's really important to get all those comments on the record as we move forward into the next steps. And there's lots of ways that you can, we can engage with you, including emails. We receive a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. We're constantly hopping, trying to answer people's questions, and making responses to their comments. Oops. So as a kind of a report out, or some statistics that we received, over the six public meetings, we had, we've had 244 survey participants. That was the overall project survey. And that's the ones we're really requesting people to kind of dig into, because that really helps us through the early scoping process. One of the big things is the live virtual public meetings. We've had over 4,000 views of the live public meeting. That includes the live question-and-answer process. It's been a big success. And a lot of people have watched it multiple times, and it really is a good way to kind of get an understanding of how that meeting went, and what the live questions were. We've also had 1,500 online open house. It's an overview video that John Lewis and I gave, which is basically an overview of the project, history, how we got here. It's a great starting place. And we've also had 277 interactive map survey participants. And those are more detailed surveys, where you can kind of go into each particular focus area, and play around with map, live maps, and figure out, you know, what's, what's a priority to you. We've had 92 emails, and as far as live participants who actually participated in the live at that time, we've had in Focus Area 1, which is actually the highest, that was in, from Belmont into I-45, it's 166 live participants at the time, followed by 83 near the airport to downtown. Focus Area 3, which is Center City, has 79. Focus Area 4, which was Independence Boulevard, was, had 70. Second highest was Focus Area 5. That's everything from Monroe Road, including the town of Matthews, to the current terminus. And Focus Area 6, which was Union County, was the final, was the final one, and that's 61. As far as early scoping, and how we chose to, or how we were advertising this, really putting the word out, is all through the months of September, myself and folks in the project team did live presentations on the Gov. Channel. We were on all the time doing our Q and A for what the project is, and early scoping. We had 20,000 printed hangar rider alerts on buses and light rail. So we were trying to really reach out to our current rider base, and our current customers, to try to get them engaged. We had 40,000 direct mailers. So we looked at every possible line that we had on the map, and drew a half mile outside of that, and sent everyone a card, either the owners and the residents. And so that added about 40,000. So that was significant. But the payoff, and when you get into the survey, is that a lot of people really responded to getting a direct mailer to their, to their home, as far as engagement. So that was money well spent. We had rider alerts, we had, you know, constant social media rider alerts, out to the neighborhood and the public. Media coverage, we had 54 reports or mentions, and we did a special media day with, you know, folks who would come out and ask us questions. We had over a quarter million Nextdoor posts for, for residents along, who were sign-ups as listeners. Our social media was big. We had 41,000 impressions, meaning people who clicked on it, or forwarded on to somebody. 763 engagements, which are the, kind of the like or don't like, and 361 link clicks, which is another detail that I'm not 100% sure of. So, and then we had 277 views of our Ask CATS webinar, which was more of a detailed presentation that we gave to the public. As far as the survey, and this is, again, the big, the big way that we're receiving the engagement, and we're presenting what we call a Purpose and Need Statement. That's a technical, kind of, process that we go through with FTA, when we go through an environmental process. 91% strongly agreed, or agreed with our Purpose and Need Statement, which is a good sign, that we're heading down a good road. Some of the project concerns we heard, really, a lot of folks were concerned about ridership and travel time, really compete, creating a competitive travel mode. A lot of people want to make sure that we're serving neighborhoods and community facilities and services, very understandable. A lot of folks had cost and visual aesthetics on their mind. So we didn't want to make sure we're keeping those things in mind. And so, a little details about the participants. 66 of the participants said they would use the Silverline monthly, weekly, or daily. So it looks like we're getting to some of our prime customers. And the top three ways that the participants heard about it was the postcard, social media, or email. So our efforts and our investment in those methods seem to have paid off. So just to kind of get into the weeds a little bit, and I won't go too deep into the details here, because I know we don't have time, but just the big things that really resonate with people as far as priorities for each one of the focus areas, was either local connectivity, which is more of an access base. They want to be able, of course, to be able to get to the station. That's what a lot of people were concerned about. So in Focus Area 1, Belmont to 485, primary thing they were focused on was, you know, local connectivity. They want to be able to get to the station and easy, easily. As well as travel time, they want a fast trip. And third was cost. That is the keeping down the cost of the overall project. Focus Area 2 was, was one of, was a little bit different, it flipped a little bit. And that's from I-45 to I-77. That's, that's basically everything from the airport to Center City. That primarily was travel time. So a lot of people seemed to be focused more about a fast trip to the airport. And that's what a lot of folks were thinking about. Local connectivity also important, as it relates to Wilkinson Boulevard, to ensure that people can actually get to the stations, very important. And development. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about development in that corridor. Okay. Well, that, I think, there wasn't really a, in the, in the question, there wasn't really an opportunity to kind of talk about what that meant. I think you, you could, you could imagine what that means in different ways. And I think that's something that we were going to want to get into, because I think this Focus Area 2 is an area that really needs a little more conversation. On Focus Area 3, that's more of the local connectivity and access with travel time and development. That's Center City. Okay? Focus Area 4, 5, and 6, all led with local connectivity or access to the station, all consistently followed by travel time. And then third was different levels of either development. Other was, you know, we were digging into what other actually meant, and we got a lot of people who just dialed in other, but didn't explain what it went. And, or we had a lot of people with their own little niche kind of concerns, or priorities that we were kind of wading through. So those were kind of the high level. And our takeaway is that, you know, station access is what everyone's thinking about, and, and travel time. Those are the two big things, as we're going through these alignment alternatives that are currently under discussion, and we go through this process of evaluating each alignment versus another, we're going to be looking at this, is looking at these priorities in a way of determining which alignment we propose to move forward with. So I'll pause there before I get into like the final, like the next steps, which is kind of like the process moving forward.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Andy, I have a question that Ms. Watlington brought up with regards to development. Some of the feedback that I've heard from people that have engaged was around the opportunity for development. So one of the questions I have is that when you, when you get the feedback from the people that did engage, how are you prioritizing, and how are you reporting back what they said? So in other words, if they, in the case of, I think it's Area 3, excuse me, Area 4 or 5... 5, yeah, Area 4 or 5, if, you know, we put a lot of money into infrastructure in the Monroe Road area recently, and the Monroe Road area advocates want to know, or have a definite feeling about some of the options that were offered, that isn't gonna take advantage of the infrastructure, the new infrastructure that's been put in that area that is attracting new businesses and new residents to the area? So I'd like to know ultimately, when you decide on the alignment, what options did you decide on that were a direct impact of the feedback that residents did give you? Did you change your mind because of some of that? And I, and I just, I think it's an important point, when you've got parts of town that have worked hard, and we have, as a city, have put new infrastructure into that area, how are we matching that up with the development? And secondly, we've talked a lot about the opportunity to capitalize on our transit lines as a way to also find new space for affordable housing. So we've got a lot of space in that area where we have a lot of NOAs, naturally occurring affordable housing, a lot of potential to develop new areas in there with new housing. And so the other point is, that I'd like to make, I guess, is at some point, I'd like to know how that, the alignment that you choose, how that prioritizes, how that priority of additional, either improved NOAs or affordable housing, matches with the alignment that you ultimately choose. So, you know, I don't know, for instance, what's the most important thing when you decide an alignment? You offer these choices to people, and they'll tell you how you feel, but ultimately, how are you gonna weigh those decisions, and what input from residents and stakeholders were part of that determination?
So, great, great question, a lot of great questions there. So we have a process that we run through, our oversight and our steering, our management team. It's a, it's a benefit and risk framework, it's basically the decision-making framework. All those things that you mentioned in there are in that framework. Really, what this boils down to is series, is a bunch of series of trade-offs. So each one, each line has a trade-off. There's a benefit, but it might have a risk. Some of those things, if they match up, if you have a very high benefit alignment with a very low risk, and what I mean, risk, risk towards implementation, risk towards cost, risk towards construction, and then you weigh that against the benefits. So part of the process, now that we're receiving this public input, which is still open, so we're still receiving input on a daily basis. So public input is part of that, so we're going, weighing through here and saying, well, we've received a lot of public input that backs up this particular alignment for good reasons, and weighing that against benefits and risks. And the benefits we have identified for each alignment, there's three benefits that we've identified. One is light rail operations, basically consistent with of travel time, we want reliable, fast, rapid transit. A second one is about equitable transit-oriented development, we want to make sure that we're developing in the right way around our stations, consistent with city policies, and we want to make sure access is good, getting back to that local connectivity. So those three things are the way we look at the benefits of a particular alternative or option, and we weigh that against risks, because we want to make sure we're putting forward a project that we can actually implement, build, operate, and maintain. So we look at this project, it's like, we look at an alternative and say, okay, are we able to move forward this project independently, or are we dependent on something else happening? So we don't want to be dependent on much. We also want to make sure that we're very mindful of operating and capital costs, those are critical for us to weigh, so we can't, if we put forward a project that we can't afford to build, it's really not that good of a plan. And three is environmental, environmental issues. So this project, you know, we will seek federal funds, that will have to go through a robust environmental process. So the weighing of those three benefits and those three risks is kind of how we're looking at these alternatives, and then ultimately reporting that back up through their city, our city management structure. So those things, Councilmember, or Mayor Protam, are in that, in the kind of matrix or in the metrics of that decision-making.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. I've told you before, I have concerns about methodology in a lot of this research. How many of the people that you got responses from are currently users of mass transit? Because you said 66% of them indicated that they would use?
Yeah.
And what I'm getting at here is that, in fact, the numbers that you point to, when you take the people who actively engaged, like, did something, as opposed to receiving a piece of mail, that number in relation to the 840,000 people, or whatever we have in Charlotte, is a percent or less. And in fact, the number of people that showed up to the live meetings is closer to a tenth of a percent, and they're not chosen at random. So the only thing I'm cautioning about here is trying to suggest that this research constitutes insight into the mix of the population of Charlotte. We're getting very isolated responses from people with agendas, and it troubles me a bit that, I mean, you mentioned that one group or two said cost. Were the people that participated in these things told anything about what the likely cost was going to be?
So, no, this was about, no, we weren't talking about specific costs of like, what one thing costs versus another, it was more of a priority question, is what is your priority at a high level?
Right, I get that, and, and, you know, it's useful information, but I'm just very cautious about how much importance to assign to it, frankly, because it's in statistical terms, this is thin, it's not random, and the other thing is, if you take people into a car showroom, and you say, do you like that car? And they say, yeah, I love that car. Well, you know, what color would you like the best? Oh, I think blue would be nice. Then the other question is, would you buy that car? And I don't know that we have put that sort of tough test into this conversation to get a better feel for what kind of commitment of resources the larger community would like to see. Now, in Denver, they had a referendum on a half-cent sales tax, if I remember right, and that passed, so, you know, with marketing and so on, you can, you may get the buy-in once people know, but it just disturbs me a bit that we're looking at this as if we had the benefit of broad community input, when in fact, this is just limited in terms of what it tells us about the community at large. I don't know, even with this new line, and if you look at the ridership on the Blue Line, for example, what percentage of the total population actually rides on that, and what percentage of the total population will use this line? So, you know, I'm not trying to oppose the line, I just am a little nervous about getting a level of comfort from a presentation like this that isn't really supported by the kind of research that I think it would take to do it right.
Andy, this is John, I'm gonna attempt to address Councilmember Driggs' questions, and I, if everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Councilmember, I think you, Driggs, you brought up some, some really critical questions. The only thing I'd like to add to the conversation is, let's remember, we're still in the design of that car, to use your analogy, we have not built the car yet, and we're not at the point of offering it for sale. What we're trying to do, and this is the same process that we have followed with the South Corridor, the Blue Line, and the Blue Line Extension, and quite frankly, considering the challenges with having public outreach, I'm astounded at the level of input that we have received. And so I just want to remember, your questions are vitally important about the cost and the input from the community, but we're still in the very early stages of designing this corridor. There will be multiple opportunities for us to continue soliciting input from the community as we refine the corridors, as we bring back options to council and to other elected bodies, and as we continue on down this process, before we get to a level of asking the community for their support of the end product.
And I would just say, it's much better that you're doing this work than not doing this work, so I think it's, it's the right thing to do. I guess my main point is, we need to be careful about extrapolating whatever conclusions you draw from this data to the entire population, because I don't think this is big enough in numbers or representative. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Eggleston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick things. One, I would agree the data is not representative of the entirety of the population of Charlotte, though I would say it is more valuable to know how many people close enough to practically ride the line on a regular basis are interested in it, because certainly someone who lives seven miles from the closest stop is not our target demographic, so they might like it in theory, or they might like it because they think in general it will help relieve some congestion, but whether or not they would see themselves riding it, they probably wouldn't. So I do think there's logic in focusing on the geographic corridor along the line. Two things that I know have been brought up before, and I've advocated for one of them, so I won't belabor the point, but just to underscore the importance that's been stated by, I think, many people on council, of making sure that as we hone in on what the alignment is, we are very mindful of the opportunities to increase our trail greenway bike path network along it. I think that's been one of the really nice cherries on top of the sundae with the Blue Line, is the rail trail with the bridge connection that we're gonna make over I-77 in the not-too-distant future. I think that will be even more of an amenity to people who live along that corridor, and there's a big effort amongst some of the leadership in East Charlotte in particular, but they've, they've included, there's dialogue now with neighborhood leaders in West Charlotte, I know as well, not necessarily this Silver Line corridor of West Charlotte, but I think throughout our community, people want to see better pedestrian infrastructure, better bicycle infrastructure, increasing and connecting our trail networks, and an infrastructure project like this gives us the opportunity to do some of that in conjunction with the work for the rail. So I know that is a priority as we look at these alignments, but just want to underscore that point. And I think, we've said this before, but again, because it gets asked, and I just want to clarify for the public, we don't envision this being phased like the Blue Line, correct? This is something that we're looking at more as a single project, not a do part of it now and do part of it in 10 years. Is that correct?
Councilmember, this is, our vision for this is to build the entire corridor at once, of course, that will depend on the availability of federal, state, and local funding.
Understood. So if theoretically, we determined that we had the funding to build half of it now and half of it later, like was done with the Blue Line, have we gotten so far in the process as to be able to say what the order of the phases might be, or that's not something we've determined, and I agree that we should be prioritizing, if at all possible, doing this as one project, not two?
No, we have not gotten down to that level of definition and detail on this design work. We will design the entire corridor. I think the questions and the discussion that you are referring to will happen as we look to enter into the project development phase, discussions with the Federal Transit Administration, and understanding how they score the entire project.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Bakari?
I did want to respond to him, but...
I know, but...
Okay.
Mr. Bakari?
Thank you. So I would just, you know, you got, you said a minute ago that this was the design phase, right? You're in the design of the car, so to speak. That makes sense. I would just encourage you guys, learning from what we, what we, you know, understood from the Blue Line in the last decade, of, you know, putting this in the context of, we're designing something that is transit alone, I don't know that is the necessary, the right lens. If we look back at that Blue Line, I think the impact that that has made on transit in the city compared to that of the impact it's made on economic development is a rounding error. So I would just encourage us to think of this as more than that, especially if we're getting feedback and things of that nature, because when we're getting to those impossible conversations of how, how is this gonna be funded and things like that, it becomes a different problem statement to solve when we're looking at it in relation to the economic value and impact that's being created. And Councilman Eggersen, I won't bother you with trying to evolve Councilman Driggs' analogy of the car, that, perhaps I will, it's a car that we're trying to get them to say, are you gonna buy it, but perhaps they're gonna live in it. There you are. Is that good? Working, yes?
Okay, that's, that, that...
I didn't, I was trying to figure out how to piece that one, and I just couldn't do it.
I think we're gonna lose a marketing war here.
But you get, you get my point, right?
All right, I get what you're saying.
I won't take the car analogy anymore, but I have a good one to respond to.
All right, so, Mr. Driggs?
I'm not gonna beat the car analogy any further.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, in response to the observation that only a certain segment of the population is a prospective user, the entire population is a prospective payer. So you have, in a set, in essence, two different value conversations, and this ties into what Councilmember Bakari was saying. For the potential users, there's one sort of calculation on the costs and the benefits, but we also will need to make the case to the rest of the community that you have improved air quality, that you have relief of congestion on the road, and as Mr. Bakari points out, that you've got economic development and so on. So this is something that needs to be kind of, that needs buy-in from the entire community, and again, I see us talking only to this rather limited self-selected group, and I'm just wondering what everybody else is gonna say when they're asked the question. And I don't prejudge what they'll say, but I just, I have no idea.
I think that the, the way that I understand this is, in some ways, we have a prescription that we have to follow for the federal government, that requires us to do a certain number of things, and if we could just put that before the community at the same time, but it doesn't, it's not, there's no logic to the process by which, where do you get your full costing as opposed to getting the data required by the federal government for them to even consider full costing? So it's a, it's a difficult and complex issue, and how it proceeds is difficult, and even more complex, because you're stacking revenue sources from, you have to start with the federal government to even get to the place that you can talk to your own people about what you're trying to do. So I appreciate the, the efforts that, I think, when you look at these next steps, many of those next steps are just requirements that we have to do, and I would hope that we would continue to be out in the public as much as possible to talk about the vision for how do we move around the city more than, you know, we know that these things are gonna be choices that everyone will have to contribute to that lives in our county, actually, and we've been working on that, having conversations a lot more. The MTC, for example, has more than six ex-mayors that are non-voting members now. That, to me, says that people are beginning to understand a number of the issues around it, and they're trying to figure out what we've figured out, perhaps, has it been 20 years now? But they're trying to figure out, what are they, how do they, how are they going to finance this, and how are they gonna make it happen? And by sitting through these kinds of opportunities, I think it is valuable for the entire region. So, Andy, I don't know if you need anything else besides what's here?
Just, just one note, so, and this is a plug, and especially for anyone who's watching, especially folks, citizens on the, on the west side, to Councilmember Driggs' comment, we have not received that many surveys from folks on the west side, and we would very much like some more input engagement from folks on the west side. So please go to our website at www.ridetransit.org/linksilverline, and please do the survey. Yes?
Ms. Watlington?
To that end, I'm curious, I see you've done a lot of innovation digitally, and it looks like it has paid great dividends, and I hope you guys are rolling that into your process going forward. In particular, for Focus Area 2, I think if you're looking for more engagement in this demographic, you don't have to canvas the neighborhoods, so I'd love to see that and happy to help out.
Thank you, we do intend to be at the west bull of our Neighborhood Association on the 20th, and we're seeking other ways to get some input. We're talking about some different strategies, so open, 100% open to dialogue about the best mechanism to do that. So yeah, so just, I'll wrap that up unless there's any other questions, it's really just next steps, and this is really more about alignment refinement and council engagement. So focus neighborhood outreach, per Councilmember Watlington, that's gonna be ongoing as we go through this process. We are coming back to TAP, John Howard, and is coming... We are coming back to TAP, John Howard, and is coming back to TAP for an update on October 26th. He's the TOD, Project Manager, getting to that economic development conversation. And then I'll be back to TAP on November 12th to give an update on the overall program. We're anticipating some targeted council outreach in the December-January timeframe as we start to ramp up for the public meetings. Then we have round three of public meeting. That's where we would anticipate presenting the refined locally preferred alternative for public input, public engagement, before we go to the Metropolitan Transit Commission in the February/March timeframe to get that adoption. And then we would anticipate coming back for a future council presentation in the January/February timeframe. And that's all I have, Madam.
All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the work being done because this is going to be what this community will need, not today, but 20 years from now, so thinking about it long-term. All right. So, thanks a bunch. So the next item on our agenda is the council meeting calendar discussion, and I believe that Mayor Protem has spoken with almost all of the council members or all of them, and she's going to give us a report.
Yeah, I've reached out to most, well, all council members, by text or either speaking to everybody, just to communicate that we are going to be having a virtual option for our council meetings going forward. So people can either come and have your table set up like this, where you will be spaced according to the public health policies, or you could do it up in your office, or you will have an option to be on WebEx at home.
So that's resolved. I think we've talked about it a good bit, and that's great to have closure. All right. So we do not have a closed session, but I've asked Mr. Mitchell, who's wearing a face covering that I think all of us need to be aware of, to talk about what he's wearing and why it's important, because this week is the first week of early voting. I'm sorry, Donata?
Yes.
Was there a hand up?
Yes, my hand is up.
Okay. Did you have a separate topic, or?
No, it was just to clarify what Mayor Protem did discussion. I just want to clarify that that, the virtual option is for closed meetings and all meetings, and also ask if that can be updated in our policy, our rules and procedures, Section 18 and Section 28.
That was just for our in-person meetings. This was not to address closed-session meetings. I think that would require a separate conversation, at least, with council members, and I can't speak to codifying it. I thought this was really a procedure to get us through this pandemic and to, that would apply to the situation at hand.
I just, just based on what happened last week, I think that, I think for clarity and for council and procedure, we should have clarity, and I think it would be appropriate to also update the rules and procedure. It already speaks to virtual meetings, but there's some language that can be modified. So I would, if I need to make a motion, I can do that.
I don't, I don't know that we, anybody else has the material in front of them to know what we're trying to do. I think that we have struggled with how to actually communicate around this. I think that the Mayor Protem has been great to reach out to everyone. Perhaps that could be the next conversation, Ms. Johnson. If you have to make a motion, I don't know that we have, that would require unanimous vote of the council, because it would be taking an action on our rules of procedure to change them. And because we haven't had that in advance in front of us, which is why the rule is unanimous on the same day for consideration, I think that it has been beneficial, at least maybe not to Mayor Protem because of the time that she spent on it, but beneficial to reach out and see how, what the temperature is for the council to do something like that before. But it's up to you, if you'd like to make a motion, it would require unanimous approval to take action to change our procedures. So I have Mr. Driggs to comment as well. Let me, I'm sorry.
Even though the agenda item is, even though the item is on the agenda, the calendar discussion?
I think the calendar discussion is on the agenda, but I don't know that changing the rules of procedure, so unless we want to, Mr. Baker, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to try to answer that question.
So what's on your agenda was a discussion about the calendar, and you've had that discussion, and I don't believe that there was anything in the agenda item that talked about a motion, but you've already said what you want to do going forward. I don't know that it's necessary to embed it into the procedures if you, but you can if you want to, keeping in mind that this is only for situations in which there is a state of emergency, which we're under right now. So it would only apply to that. So it will be, what you've just said is how it's going to be going forward. I think, I don't want to speak for Ms. Johnson, but I think her concern was making sure that everyone understands exactly what it means going forward, and I think that you all understand it now, with the idea that there's still a closed session, if you want to have a closed session discussion. But right now, closed sessions will be in person, and the regular meetings will be virtual. Well, you have the virtual option, and that's where you are right now. And whether that's embedded into the policy or not, it's really your call.
So that's what I'd like to clarify, the closed sessions, that we also have the link virtually for closed sessions, because we did that for five months, so we know the technology is there. And also, our policy and our rules and procedure, they do give the option to meet virtually, and it has that language if you're sick or if there's an emergency, and I'm proposing that we remove that language. So if we need to put that on the future agenda, then we can. But I do want to clarify that the closed meetings are also an option to meet virtually, because just like today's agenda, if there were a closed session in the middle of the meeting, how could one realistically meet virtually, taking safety precautions, and then be present for closed session and then not again afterward? And again, this virus is not, it doesn't respect agenda, whether it's a closed session or not. So I would like to clarify that closed sessions and all meetings that we have the option to meet virtually, and if we need to put it on the future agenda for, to modify or codify the policy, then we can do that.
My understanding is we can do that, but I think you want to have a motion, to make that motion. What I, I actually had a conversation with Mr. Newton just this afternoon about the closed sessions, and thought that it might be helpful to have a conversation with them, much like you had over the weekend with the Mayor Protem, because there are ways to deal with these closed sessions that may not require in-person or meetings. So I just thought that it would be helpful, but it's up to the council to decide. So I don't, Mr. Driggs had a comment?
When we started going into virtual meetings, we didn't rewrite our rules, right? I mean, we did that by a general consensus, and in response to the situation, nobody raised the subject of a need to change our rules when we started that practice. And now, now it comes up that we're trying to consolidate this. And the other thing is, I think we need to be very clear about the, what the rules, the intent is of this whole conversation, which was that as long as there was a COVID threat, we would continue to have WebEx meetings. But I think it's a whole different subject as to whether we pick that up permanently, and I don't see a basis for that myself. I guess, you know, the council can decide. But the thing that we're concerned about right now is while there is the COVID threat, whether or not we need to keep the WebEx option. You know, my personal preference would be that the WebEx option is available only to someone who is living in a self-imposed stay-at-home situation, because if people can circulate freely and then have, for some reason, for health reasons, cannot participate in this meeting and fulfill their obligations to voters, I don't get that. I don't understand why a health concern applies to this meeting and doesn't apply to the other activities in which many of us are engaged. So that's a view about that. I don't want to chime in on the closed session. I think we probably need to investigate whether that distinction should apply or not. But certainly, we should only be talking about the WebEx option for as long as the health threat subsists. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other comment?
Yes, ma'am, there, Mr. Newton had his hand up.
Mr. Newton?
And then Mr. Winston.
And Mr. Winston. Mr. Newton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So point of clarification here, Patrick, so I'm trying to understand where we are in the process, given Councilwoman Johnson's comments, and given Councilmember Driggs' comments, because it was my understanding, we're not talking about changing procedures, right? However, is it our current policy to operate in a virtual, or at least to have the virtual option? Is that, is that correct? I mean, am I understanding that correctly?
So, excuse me, and your procedures, Rule 28 speaks to telephonic and electronic attendance at meetings, and at council meetings, it's very limited in terms of participating electronically, if it's necessary to achieve a quorum, or your attendance is precluded to weather civil unrest, emergency, et cetera, and the meeting needs to be continued or to take action on the matters that cannot be delayed. So it's very limited in terms of the types of things that you can do. I mean, what your, what your procedures don't really take into account is a pandemic. And what you have been operating under since, since March or April was a combination of the state of emergency that the governor has and the statutory authority that the General Assembly provided to allow virtual meetings, which really wasn't taken into account in the way that it needs to be taken into account for this pandemic. So you've got all the authority to do what it is that you're doing without making any changes to your procedures if you don't want to make those changes. And you've been making these, you know, incremental changes as things have changed a little bit, and as you've been allowed to have more people in a room. That's why we're in the situation that we're in right now, as opposed to back in June and July, when the limitation, I think, was 10 people in a room, and there was no way to hold a meeting at all.
So as I understand it, so the procedures broadly allow for what we're doing, and allow for what we were doing before, to Councilwoman Johnson's point, these closed-session meetings, right? And so I'm just trying to understand where the line of delineation or demarcation is, because I think the point she's raising is that that line seems to exist between the closed and the open. So where exactly, and this gets back to the mayor's point as to how many votes are needed to raise the issue altogether, where exactly is that line? And is it strictly a policy-based decision that has been made separate from the procedure? I mean, that's what I think you're saying, right?
Yes, this is a policy decision that you all have in terms of how you want to conduct your meeting. That's correct.
So when we say a procedure decision, that sounded like that's, and that needed unanimous vote, whereas a policy decision, does that need unanimous vote, or does that simply need the majority of, well, I guess, six votes?
Well, I think this is the issue of when to have that discussion, if you want to put it on the agenda, since it's not on the current agenda. Ms., the councilwoman could ask the manager to put it on an agenda going forward, and unless there was an objection by someone on the council, it would come over to you in a, in a future agenda. And that just needs to be done, and can be done at this meeting, it may have already been done at this meeting, where a council member simply asks to have an agenda item placed on a future agenda. And again, it would automatically show up on a future agenda unless there was an objection, and then you would have a vote at that particular meeting.
Well, that has me very confused then, because I thought the item on the agenda was calendaring, and we've been having a conversation pertaining or underneath that item of calendaring for virtual meetings, right? And I just don't understand, if that's what we're talking about here, if that's what pertains to this item of calendaring, why a subset of virtual meetings being closed as opposed to open would not be on tonight's agenda?
Well, I haven't said that. I just said what I thought was a method of discussion. I did not say that you couldn't vote on it. If Ms. Johnson or you want to make a motion for the meetings to change, and however, whatever your motion needs to contain, I would say, under the COVID or the pandemic that we have or under our existing procedures, as the city attorney has said, you can certainly make that motion. All I was suggesting is that it seems to me that this has been a successful process that was followed by the Mayor Protem, and it might be successful to have that same discussion under closed, about closed sessions. But I think a motion, you can make a motion in order right now to do this.
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to continue to allow the virtual options for all meetings, including closed and special meetings, and also to update the rules and procedures, Section 18 and 28, to include the language that we have virtual meetings.
Now, that's where I have to ask the attorney. When you're talking about changing the procedures permanently, I think that was not on the agenda. Everything that you said prior to that, it seems to me, is on the agenda. That's what Mr. Newton was referencing.
Yeah.
So I want to just make sure the motion's in order. Maybe you could divide those two things up, and then that way it could, it would apply so that there could be the discussion and the vote.
Okay. Then I'd like to make the motion to continue to allow the virtual options for all meetings, including closed and special meetings.
Until the pandemic regulations are ended?
The state of emergency.
A state of emergency, as the attorney says.
No, no, until the...
Oh, for all of, all meetings?
Yeah.
For convenience, for whatever? Like when, when this is, I'm just trying to get where we are.
I'm just removing the specificity at this point, implicitly because of what happened last week. I think that that was a problem. I think that we had decided on 9/28 that we were going to proceed until 10/12, and then there was, seemed to be some confusion. So I think to make this less confusing for council and for staff, to send us the link when we request them, that we need to make the motion that virtual meetings are allowed.
Okay, so, that's, you've heard the motion? Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Winston? Second the motion. Now for discussion. Mr. Eggleston, Mr. Winston, followed by Mr. Winston.
To make, to make sure I'm understanding, we are now saying this is not COVID-related, that the, that once there's agreement amongst the public health community that there's a vaccine, the pandemic is over, we want to continue the virtual option for any calls? Is that the motion?
Right now, Broadway is closed until May 30th. We don't know how long we're going to have this discussion. I want to avoid this discussion, the discussion we had on 10/5, the discussion we had on 9/28. Let's just, we can make the motion so indefinitely, because we don't know how long the COVID restrictions right now, even though we're in Phase 3, we have record numbers in the county, and I just think that we need to put this to bed, and I think this is a way to put it to bed.
I agree wholeheartedly that we don't know how long this tunnel is, but I would be uncomfortable with anything that's not tied to the fact that we are doing this because of a public health crisis, and we're not trying to change the rules permanently, because I think outside of these circumstances, having people be able to dial in virtually beyond the state of emergency or beyond a public health crisis, just because they want to a year from now, is problematic, so.
All right. Mr. Winston?
I'd just like to point out the fact that if this pandemic had hit three years ago at this point in time, there would be no opportunity to have a public forum that spoke to the constituents, because the rules of council, it did not televise the public forum. They put it before the business meeting. If the pandemic had hit three years ago, the audience of people that were paying attention to council business would have been severely diminished, because it was not part of our policy that we utilized social media to stream our meetings and the various work of city council and our committees. My point here is that I think... My point here is that I think we do need to have two discussions, two policy discussions and decisions, as is being illustrated by the discussion that we're having today. Yes, I do think that there is consensus that we should continue to have a virtual meeting for all options, whether they be open, closed, or special meetings during the pandemic. But I do think that we should also, it is within our rights to have that discussion on how do we modernize government. I would disagree with Mr. Driggs, that there have been some of us that, from the beginning, that have said, we need to figure out how to create structural changes to do the work of government better. This is the opportunity to reimagine the way we interact with our work and with our constituents. So, now, I think we should consider a virtual option indefinitely, as we continue to consider governance issues. We know that, again, that this is a full-time, this is a full-time job, but it's expected that you're supposed to treat it as part-time. So, if we do want to have the best representative democracy that we can have, I think it is incumbent on us to have both of these discussions, and now's the time to do it.
All right, Mr. Driggs.
I think there's a black and white question here as to whether the thing that we already all agreed to, which was to continue the WebEx meetings going forward, was intended to extend past the end of the state of emergency or not. And I think what the Mayor Pro Tem thought and what the agenda formulation intended was that we would address that question. And, Mr. Winston, I would remind you that your argument that you should be allowed to participate via WebEx last week was based on health concerns. And if those health concerns are removed through the end of the state of emergency, it's a whole different conversation. We can have that conversation about whether or not, without an emergency, we ought to have WebEx meetings, but I would submit that that conversation is beyond the scope of tonight's agenda item and should call for a unanimous vote.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I tend to agree with my colleague from the plaza. I think the easy vote tonight is to continue virtual opportunities for members, if they choose to take advantage of them, until the public health crisis is over. I mean, I think there's 11 votes for that right now. I think it's a bridge too far to suggest that that should be a permanent option, especially if we're honest with ourselves and doing self-assessment. I think, notwithstanding the public health crisis, as an operating team, I think we would have been a lot more effective and efficient if we had the luxury of group meetings and interaction in the hallways and talking about issues and doing a lot of the homework before the meeting, so that we wouldn't have these seven, and eight, and nine-hour meetings like we're going to have tonight. So, I just, I'm prepared to vote to extend this to the end of the public health crisis when that is to be defined, I don't know, by the Health Department. But I think it's a bridge too far for me to have this type of discussion about our rules relating to virtual meeting as an option, because I believe it is based on this council. In my experience, that would not be effective or efficient of us doing the business of the city.
I see our attorney is requesting some time to talk.
At the risk of confusing you further, you don't have the option to change the rules once the state of emergency goes away. The ability to be in a virtual meeting that we're in right now is based on the state law that's tied to the state of emergency. So, if you want to make changes about how you do these meetings, that's going to require additional changes of the state law. When the state of emergency is over, you're going to go back to the way it used to be in terms of how the meetings are run, absent more legislation.
And I think that's, and Ms. Johnson's motion was to change to indefinite without a consideration, I believe, of that law, so, I don't know. All right, Ms. Watlington? I'll come back to you, Ms. Johnson.
So, now I'm confused. So, the reason I ask this question is because we know that there are other counties and other municipalities that have virtual options from time to time. Hope County, for instance. You're saying that, I guess I'm trying to reconcile the two. This time last year, before the pandemic, in our rules of procedure, had, let me just ask you a different one, I'm sorry, I'm confused. This time last year, without pandemic, no change to the existing state legislation. If we had, or the previous council had voted to change rules of procedure to allow for virtual meetings, you're saying that there's a state statute that prevents that? Is that what you're saying?
So, there are two competing issues, how this body participates, and then how the public participates. What the General Assembly did was they created a mechanism whereby the public could participate virtually, and you could still do the work that you do. Now, individually, as a council, you can make your own rules in terms of how you individually, you know, in a situation where someone's sick, and in this case, you know, with Charlotte, you know, to make a quorum happen, you can have those limited options if you so chose.
Okay, so she's, it sounds like the motion that Councilmember Johnson has made is fine as it relates to council. The issue that you're bringing up is how it relates to how public participates in the meeting.
Yes, the whole virtual aspect of it from the public participation, yes.
And I think that's what, Ms. Watlington, if I can add, I think that's what was so confusing, because we referenced the adoption last time of virtual meetings, and that schedule was for the public, not, it wasn't a discussion around what we were doing. That vote, I think it was the 26th or something? I can't remember, something like that. That's when we were approving the calendar, the clerkings, to inform the public of how to interact with us. So, now, we're on how to interact with each other, which we usually set at the beginning of the term and handle, but under the pandemic, we've gone to virtual meetings, and the Mayor Pro Tem's discussion with council was to allow virtual in-building or in, wherever we have social distancing. So, let me just make sure, can I have the clerk read the motion? Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I wouldn't have to bear.
I'm sorry, who's that?
This is Councilmember Newton.
Hi, Mr. Newton? Yes?
So, that last point, I guess, confused me a little bit there, but I guess we are where we are. I think that Councilwoman Johnson makes a very valid point that we have operated with closed-session meetings that were virtual, at least amongst us, and that's something that we have been able to accomplish in the past. I would hate to require, to somehow eliminate a virtual option, requiring a council member to be present who was not comfortable with being present, and therefore deprive that council member of their voice, and I think probably more importantly, the voice of their constituents in the conversation. And I'll say this too, so I think that Councilmember, Councilmember Eggleston makes a very good point, too, about, you know, having some sort of definitive time period for, particularly if it's tied to the crisis in which we are currently engaged in. And so, I understand some of the discomfort moving forward with the original motion. Don't know if there's going to be a second for this, but I would offer a substitute motion whereby it is Councilwoman Johnson's motion, with the exception, or I guess, with the difference being that it is tied to the tenure of the public health crisis, at least for the time being. So, I guess what I'm saying is substitute motion whereby virtual meetings, from the standpoint of us as council members, whereby we can interact if we so, you know, if we're comfortable enough or we're so inclined, interact in a virtual way on both the public and the closed through the tenure of the public, of the public health crisis that we're currently in.
Is there a second to Mr. Newton's motion?
I have a question before.
Well, he has to have a second. I know you have to second it and then understand it. I'm not, I don't write these things myself, believe me.
Second.
All right, then, Mr. Graham's second, so now, Ms. Watlington.
So, then, my question is, what, upon what basis, and I know we were saying the public health decision or whatever, but we've had several different public health opinions and different phases and whatnot, so it, help me understand, for Councilmember Newton, what do you have in mind as definitive versus kind of exactly where we are today? Help me understand the difference in what you're saying.
Could you repeat the question, please?
I just want to know, how are you anticipating us to determine when the public health need is over? Because we're in a situation right now where some feel like it's sufficiently over and others don't. That's my question. Are you saying?
Well, I want to make sure that, I think that what we're talking about is the governor gives you a number of people that can be in a room with social distance and various regulations. That used to be 10, then was 25, and now it's 50. And outside in the 10,000-foot football stadium, it's 7%.
Right, and so that's why...
So, those are the rules that we've been operating under.
I understand, but that's why I'm asking.
Well, no, that's what I was talking, Mr. Newton was asking what it was, I think.
So, if I keep the fun of that, Madam Mayor, I think you make a really great point, Councilwoman Watlington. So, I'm of the opinion that I do not want you to force any of, you know, you as my colleagues, and I would hope that you wouldn't want to force me to be in an environment where I'm not comfortable, because I'm afraid that I could catch what amounts to a deadly illness. And so, I'm with you. I do question whether or not those types of mandates or those types of kind of procedures that have been issued, from whether it be the top, you know, maybe the federal government, state government, et cetera, whether that is, kind of upholds that spirit of, you know, us respecting the comfort level of our colleagues. I just can't really reconcile the idea of us eliminating an option if one of our colleagues is uncomfortable, and depriving that person of the, so an option to go virtual and depriving that person of their voice in the meeting, and as I was mentioning a second ago, depriving their constituency's voice. I just feel like that's undemocratic. So, I don't know exactly where we put that point. I mean, I think you make a very good point in that, right? And I wouldn't say, I mean, it's very vague to say it's a public health crisis, and I wouldn't tie that specifically to any governmental mandate, so much as our own decision-making and our own mandate as a governing body ourselves. Does that make sense? And to the extent that does make sense, I'll rescind my motion.
All right, we have a substitute motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just rescinding it.
No, he said, what did you say about rescinding that?
If there's confusion that surrounds my motion, I will rescind it.
His motion wasn't confusing.
I'll rescind my motion.
I don't think, your motion's not confusing. You said until a public health crisis is over, and including closed sessions, and so, I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. Newton?
So, I'm not asking that it be tied to any governmental mandate or any sort of, you know, state, federal policies here, so much as our own decision-making and when we feel most comfortable to have that being, when we feel comfortable that the public health...
And that would be exhibited by a vote? Would you measure that by a vote, Mr. Newton?
I think that would be our consensus.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It would be our decision, and it would be by vote. Okay, so, Mr. Newton has a substitute motion?
Until we decide. It's indefinite until we, as the governing body, decide that the public health crisis is over.
Mr. Newton, all right, Mr. Newton says that we should have options that were outlined, virtual, in-building, in-space, until we change our minds about changing those ideas, so that everyone would be comfortable, but I don't think that's a part of the motion. The motion is till we, as a council, change our minds. So, that is the motion for the meetings, okay? All right. Okay.
Including the virtual option for closed meetings.
All right, I have Mr. McCarty first, then Mr. Driggs. Mr. Graham, are you speaking? Okay. Okay.
You know, I look at, it's, I look at the agenda each Monday, wondering, oh, this looks like a simple agenda that we'll get through easily, and it always surprises me, whatever pops up. I am so confused, because I was under the impression that because of the pandemic and the governor's order, given the fact that we have to have certain visibility and viewership capabilities of the general public, whether it's a public forum where they interact or how they see us interact, that we were now, for the first time ever, allowed to use WebEx and have the abilities that we have during it, and a gray area entered when the governor switched to this last phase, where we could decide which way to go with that. We could keep doing it, or we could not do it. And we started, because of a lot of history and other things, to gravitate towards social distance, towards using all the protocols you see in place, so we could get back together and start figuring out how to work together again. And there were some issues there. So, the Mayor Pro Tem went to work, talking to everyone, and figured out some kind of general consensus of how everyone could do the things they're comfortable with or not. None of that required a vote, and I'm just confused at what the Mayor Pro Tem has done and what this motion is and what the actual difference is, because I feel like we've achieved all the same things, yet we're still fighting against each other and debating on what the right motion or counter-motion is. So, does anyone have an answer as it relates to what?
Closed session.
So, closed session is the only specific item we're talking about right now?
Yes.
No, I, guys, I really have to, you have to go with the motion. You can't just say, well, let's, whatever.
I guess where I was confused is what the Mayor Pro Tem did didn't require a motion before.
There are two motions on the floor.
Let me clarify.
It doesn't require a motion.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out which one I'm going to not vote for, so.
Okay, okay. I wanted to start, let's back up. I want to clarify. So, based on what happened last week, we knew which council members felt that they wanted to have a WebEx link for our meetings because of health concerns of the pandemic. So, when this came onto the agenda for this week, and we were going to decide if we would be allowed virtual meetings, participation in meetings or not, I called the council members that, well, I called Ms. Johnson and I called council members that I wasn't sure where they were going to land, because in everything we do, we try to get six votes. So, when it was clear we had six or seven votes to say, yes, let's give a virtual option to meet online, to be able to meet online during this pandemic if you have concerns about being in the building, then I texted the rest of you and said, hey, based on that, we're going to go ahead. I actually thought we were going to vote tonight, but nobody said, no, 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 I don't want to do that, I want the option to vote against it. So, that's why we didn't vote, because everybody was in agreement that we would go ahead, including people who said, I'd rather us have a space in the building for everybody to meet individually. So, we got to this unanimous place ahead of actually being here and meeting online, and now, and that's the goal, and that's what's been missing with this process, and the pandemic makes it difficult. But these are conversations that we should be having amongst ourselves, and if you have concerns about these things, we need to call each other. But now, we've spent all this time here on this issue once again, on something that was not on the agenda, when we should be having conversations. If we can't do it live, then we've got to call each other, because the public is listening to all of this, and they see a group that can't come to a decision to save our lives. And it's just, you know, we're, we've got to serve the public to our highest and best effort, and that means that we've got to do work during the week. If people feel that there's a reason we should have closed sessions online, I personally am against it. I'm open to hearing why we shouldn't, we should be able to do that. But, you know, to hash this out here in a council meeting, I just, and, Mr. Winston, I can see you smiling or laughing, and please chime in, but this is really frustrating to try to get anything done and move on. So, feel free to share, but I wish we would talk more offline to each other. If we can't do it in person or outside, pick up the phone and call each other, so we don't always get to this point.
All right, we have two motions on the floor. Mr. Newton's motion, which is allow virtual... virtual for both regularly schedule all meetings, including closed sessions, until the health crisis is over. I'm sorry, that's right, until, I'm sorry, I missed, until council votes to change its mind. That is the motion. It has a second. Can we just vote? I'm sorry. Wait, wait, Mr. Newton, Mr. Driggs is next, has been recognized.
That motion is tantamount to saying indefinitely.
Mr. Driggs.
Mr. Mr. Hey, Mr. Driggs, push, push your mic.
If we have an objective benchmark, like the end of the emergency, or as suggested by the attorney, then, then it is not tantamount to just saying indefinitely, regardless of the status, as recognized by health authorities and otherwise, we can just carry on meeting virtually. So I, I think we need to be very careful about Mr. Newton's motion, because that's tantamount to the thing that was being suggested before, and we need to have a hard test related to health as to when we're going to stop the current decision, not excluding the possibility of future conversations about a change in policy.
All right, I have Mr. Eggleston followed by Mr. Graham.
Uh, Ms. Johnson.
I'll be quick, but two points-
And then Ms. Johnson.
Two brief points. One, as far as I'm aware, none of us have any real public health expertise. So to me, the council deciding versus when Gibby Harris or our state health director decides is a bit silly and a bit arrogant, because none of us have an ounce of expertise in this area compared to either of them. To me, it should be tied to a public health director making a decision for our state or for our county. The reason, and again, I, I think we need to underscore for the public, the entire council has now agreed that as long as this pandemic is going on, there should be a virtual option for the public meetings that this council has for any council member that has concerns about their pub, about their health. I think there is a material difference between that, which is a meeting that's broadcast on television, broadcast on Facebook, accessible to anybody who wants to watch it, and a closed session, which is not, because there are other people that live in every single council member that's currently serving's home, our spouses, our significant others, our children, whoever might be over at any given time, is not a member of the city council. And to have a WebEx going on on a closed session, to me, is very different than a public meeting. There will, there are opportunities that can be afforded to any council member who doesn't want to attend a closed session in person to have one-on-one phone calls, or in-person meetings, or whatever, with whatever staff member is presenting to the council in that closed session. But to me, broadcasting closed sessions is opening a mighty big can of worms. So for that reason, I'll be voting no. But I want to reiterate that we have agreed unanimously that public meetings should have a virtual option for anyone who's concerned during this pandemic.
All right, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I don't want to add any more confusion, but the motion that I second was when Mr. Newton said that the timeline for determining when this thing was over was at the discretion of the public health officials, not the city council. That was, that was my second, not the, the latter one.
I'm sorry, and I should have kept up with that. So the question is, are you withdrawing your second?
If it's, if it's tied to the council making the decision, then I, I withdraw the second.
Mr. Newton, you've just lost your second on council making that decision, and I apologize for not keeping up with it. All right, so that goes back to the main motion by Ms. Johnson. Will the clerk read the, I'm sorry. Did someone say, Mr. Bakari?
I'd make a counter motion.
You, you have to make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion, I mean. Make a substitute motion that we, as the mayor pro tem had worked with everyone and determined, we create a protocol that bases it on, well, on Gibby Harris and the governor and the, the, the health services group for the state, determining that we are in general post-pandemic state, and that be the point that it shuts off. It only applies to public meetings, not to closed sessions.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a second. All right, so I don't know that we, I think everybody has, has, so we have a substitute motion. Did everyone understand and hear the substitute motion?
No.
The substitute mo- All right. Um, no, we, we need to plow on through this. We've got an agenda. The substitute motion, please repeat it.
The substitute motion is that we will continue forward with options for virtual attendance by council members, as well as physical attendance for all public meetings, not closed session meetings, until the point of which the state health and human services department and/or the Mecklenburg County Health Department deem that we have entered a general public safe-
Alar can second your motion.
Safe state post this pandemic period and phase we're in.
All right, Mr. Eggleston, second that motion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hands virtually or in this physical space.
You'll need to.
We have one. All right, you can see the people whose hands, so on, I just need to ask, Mr. Newton, what is your vote? Mr. Newton? What? No? You, I can't hear you.
No, my vote's no.
All right, Ms. Eschmira? Ms. Eschmira, we can't hear you.
No.
All right, Mr. Winston?
No.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
No.
All right, so the motion passes.
Roll call with everyone?
I'm sorry.
You've already done that group, so.
Well, by her absence, she voted. All right, all right, Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Ms., Mayor Pro tem? Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
All right, the motion has one, two, three, it fails, it's five.
Now you go back to the original motion.
The original motion, which is Ms. Johnson's motion, Ms., Ms., Madam Clerk, would you read Ms. Johnson's motion, please?
A motion was to continue virtual options for all meetings regular and closed, and to change the rules of procedure, Section 18 and 28, to reflect those changes.
Ms. Johnson, is that your motion? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Is the motion in order, Mr. Attorney?
I believe so, yes.
Just clarification, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Graham?
So as, so we're voting to basically codify this change into our procedures?
Yes, that's my, is that, is that correct, Mr. Baker?
As I understand the motion, yes.
Is to change our procedures for-
Five years from now, this policy of another council that changes will allow meetings to be any purpose.
Yes, sir.
No, any purpose.
Right.
I don't feel like coming to work today, so I'll, I'll take it at home.
She's saying indefinitely, the next time the council would address. All right, Mr. Baker? I'm sorry. You guys, help me, because I thought you said that there was a separation between the procedures changing and the motion to do it indefinitely.
That's right. The question here now is whether or not, was this on the agenda for you to vote? Because there was nothing on your agenda about changing the procedures. This is, this is a council issue. But your, your policies speak to, by unanimous consent, you can vote on, on something that's not actually on the agenda. What's on the agenda is a discussion about the, about your, how you're going to handle your virtual meetings. That was when everybody agreed to do it.
Agreed on something. Now we're into a different motion, which is continue, I think, I thought Ms. Johnson was breaking them in the two, continue meetings inver, indefinitely, virtually with choices. And I thought the procedure was a difference. So I thought it was appropriate for her to ask for, to continue the meetings indefinitely, because that's the meeting on the agenda. What I don't have is the procedures, so just help me out here.
Ultimately, that's going to be your, your call. If you're comfortable having this conversation, you can, you can have that, you can go ahead and do the vote. That's not a state law issue.
It is a matter of, my, my issue is that we are, I don't believe we should change our procedures without having a discussion and wording in front of us about what they are. So I would rule that the first portion of Ms. Johnson's motion is to continue to have options for meetings virtually and indefinitely, is the motion that she made. The second part, I would say, requires us to have the document, all of us in front of us, and knowing what it means. So, Ms. Johnson, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you're ruling, that, that's fine.
All right, so your motion, Mr. Winston?
So, what, what are we agreeing on to what the unanimous conversation that we all agreed to, to have today?
To clarify, and that's, I thought we were voting on it. I did not, that wouldn't have been right, because I didn't think we had a unanimous agreement. I thought we had a clear majority that would have voted in favor of virtual meetings. And I thought we could vote, I thought we were voting on that tonight. So that's my fault if procedurally we could not vote on that. And then when I, when we talked in the agenda review at three, and I said, there's a clear majority of people that want virtual meetings, then it was just decided, well, let's just say that then, and we don't have to vote on it.
Because what I, what I'm agreed to was the idea that we will vote tonight on having a virtual meeting option. Everybody should have a WebEx link, is what I agreed to.
I think that's-
And what that, and what that means is, is what we're getting to the details with. So if we all agree to have this discussion, I, I don't understand how Ms. Johnson's version of that is out of line.
She wants to codify it.
She wants to codify it in the procedures, and I think that other people-
What I'm saying is, we agreed to have a vote tonight, so we already have unanimous consent to have a vote on this. So I, I don't, since-
No.
I-
I'm reading, I'm reading Ms. Iceland's text message to me right now on what we're, on what we all agreed to, to, to have on the agenda tonight.
I didn't agree to that.
I, I thought we were going to have a vote. And when we talked at the agenda review at three, I was told we didn't need to vote. We could just agree that we would have virtual meetings. I thought we were actually going to vote, and when it was seven or eight council members that said, yeah, I would just as soon have virtual meetings, then that's what I was saying to you, that we'll, we'll vote tonight, everybody seems to be in favor of it. And what I was told then later is that we don't need to vote. What I didn't know is procedurally, we could not vote.
So we have a motion from Ms. Johnson. Is there s-
We can vote, we can vote tonight.
You could vote if you, if you wanted to. The, the conversation-
I thought that you said that I had to rule whether or not changing our procedures
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking to what the mayor pro tem just said.
I'm sorry. We could, we could have voted.
You could have if you, if you chose, but based on what I heard, and what I was told at three was, you had unanimous agreement to do virtual meetings through the end of the state of emergency.
I had.
And my response was, if that's what you've all agreed to, you can vote, you cannot vote. But you don't have to vote if everyone's in agreement on that going forward.
I didn't, well, there's a big, there's a difference between everybody, you know, unanimous agreement as if it was a vote, and anybody saying, no, 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 that's not what I want to do. And, and I'm sorry for that nuance, but nobody said, no, I want to vote against it. And so what I conveyed was that there's, there's a clear majority that wants to do this, and so I was told that then we didn't need to actually take a vote if that's what everybody wants to do.
But I think we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Johnson now, which says, have virtual meetings indefinitely.
Including closed sessions.
Including closed sessions. So that is the motion, that, the first part of the motion, that we can rule on. We can do the procedural question and a second motion about changing it, and for what purpose, or having it, my, my suggestion would be that we send it to the Intergovernmental Committee that talks about effective government, so that there could be a discussion about it. But that's, that would be, again, my referral idea. But we have a motion, the motion from Ms. Johnson, me, we will have options for virtual for all public meetings of the council, including closed sessions.
Indefinitely.
And indefinitely. And that was seconded by Mr. Winston. So now we will go and go through the list, and we will have our votes. Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Johns, next, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
No.
Mr. Eggleston?
No.
Mr. Driggs?
No.
Mr. Bakari? Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Um, Ms., Mayor Pro tem?
I can't, I don't understand indefinitely. That just, that's not a process to me.
Well, indefinitely means until we vote to change it.
Well, then, yes.
Under the rules that we have, that before we go back to our procedural rules. So the motion passes. Does that make sense? Until we are out from under the rules by which we have had these meetings that are this way, that's what the number and the health rules. So then you'd have to change it. So is indefinitely meaning, because we have rules of procedure that the council also voted on.
Yeah, but I thought you just said-
This is just, we just voted to have these indefinitely.
Don't worry, this will be overruled, because it's legal soon, so.
We're going to have to have this conversation again, and we're going to fix it.
All right, so I would suggest that we refer the procedural review of the calendar. We will be voting on a calendar in December, the first meeting of December, we set the new calendar up. I would like to suggest that we turn this over to a committee, the Effective Government Committee, for a recommendation, and that might get to more of the explanation of what indefinitely means, or pandemic, and that would be ready for the council vote on the formal calendar, the first organizing meeting in December.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Actually, Madam Mayor, Ms. Eschmira has her hand up.
Ms. Eschmira has her hand up first.
My, my question was already addressed.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
So could, could we put, instead of going to a committee, could we put the rest of the, the rules and the procedure on a future meeting, a future agenda that will allow everyone to take a look at the rules and procedure with-
Now, that's a different issue for me. I thought we were trying to figure out how to be virtual in our meetings, but if we want to look at all of the rules and procedures, I would not have that requirement, considering what we have on our agenda from the committees and budget coming up. But that's up to the council, as the council wants to change the rules and procedures, or have a review of them, that's up to the council. But I doubt seriously if they'd be ready by December.
Yeah, we, okay, and we can talk off, I can, I can address offline, or we can look at this in the future. We've spent enough time on this. Thank you.
No, we really haven't. Let's talk about it some more. Yeah, let's talk about this some more.
Question, Mayor. Let's do some more.
All right, so, Mr. Driggs, if you would look at that section on meetings for a December recommendation prior to December, when we have the council, these things can change every December that there's an election, guys, so it's okay. It's not a big deal, really. December happens every year. Okay. Mr. Mitchell, you want to talk about your mask?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's talk about something we all can agree on. We need to go out there and tell the citizens about the upcoming city bonds. And so we have one, $102.7 million for street bonds and for citizens. What's important is the $8 million resurface we have allocated under that. Then we have the $44.5 million Neighborhood Improvement Bonds, something that's dear to a lot of our hearts, is additional $14.5 million investment at Corridor. And something this council's been passionate about is $50 million for our housing bond. Early voting begins October 15th, so please, council, let's really get our constituents out here, entertain any questions they have. But we need to continue to be successful with our bonds to move our city forward. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, so that is, I think, Mr. Jones, do we have any other items? Okay, so that is, I think, Mr. Jones, do we have any other items?
That's it.
I have one item that I wanted to bring up. I've also asked that the Budget and Effectiveness Committee take on another task. I would, the question is, what should be the city's approach to maintain the financial stability of the Charlotte Department's Fire Department's retirement system? And the charge to the committee is to review the changes proposed by the Charlotte Firefighters' Retirement Board to include the proposed changes to purchase cost of prior military service and the board's recommendation to increase the employer contribution in the upcoming budget. So that can be both a budget but a policy decision. Okay. So with that, we'll go to our awards and recognition, and I'd like to enter, ask Mr. Bakari, as well as the staff of the person that's representing the Fire Department, to be able to join us. And Mr. Bakari, would you start off our awards and recognition?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will read this proclamation now. Whereas the city of Charlotte, North Carolina, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Charlotte, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with thirty-one percent of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and whereas Charlotte's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops, and whereas Charlotte residents should test their smoke alarms monthly, and whereas Charlotte residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan with everyone in the household, including visitors, are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, she, by Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, does hereby proclaim October first through thirty-first, 2020, as Charlotte Fire Prevention Month throughout this city, and she urges all the people of Charlotte by checking their kitchens for fire hazards and using safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Charlotte's Fire and Emergency Services. Witness her hand and the official seal of the City of Charlotte, and I am pleased and honored to present this to Senior Fire Instructor Amy Ray.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of Chief Johnson and the entire Charlotte Fire Department, thank you very much. We very much appreciate this recognition and proclamation to the citizens of Charlotte, and we hope that every one of you go home tonight and check your smoke alarm, take advantage of this, as well as the citizens. We very much appreciate that, and hope you stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. And, you know, fires are devastating, as the resolution said, and there are so many ways to prevent them, having a fire, a smoke detector, having an extinguisher, especially in the kitchen. So thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next recognition that we'd like to make is going to be presented by Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proclamation from the City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that is woeful and systematically patterned of power and control by one intimate partner against another, it affects people of all age, race, socioeconomic status, religion, nationality, sex, sexual orientation, and gender identity, as more than half of transgender people have experienced some form of intimate partner violence. And whereas domestic violence manifests in many forms, including physical, sexual, verbal, emotion, emotional, psychological, financial, abuse, stalking, and coercive action. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affected accounts for significant loss of life, including twelve lives taken in Mecklenburg County in 2020. Whereas domestic violence survivors day would create a unique opportunity in recognizing, honoring, and celebrate the courage of victims and survivors in Mecklenburg County, as survivors are a testament to the resilience of the human spirit. Now, therefore, we, by Alexander Lyles, Mayor of the City of Charlotte, and George Dunlap, Chair of the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2020 and October 15th respectively as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Survivors Day in Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, and convene to the observance to all citizens, witnessed by the seal of by Alexander Lyles, Mayor of the City of Charlotte, and George R. Dunlap, Chairman of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much. We will make sure that that proclamation is distributed to the appropriate agencies and the many events that are being taking place during this month, that we really fight domestic violence, wearing purple and making sure that people know that there are havens that they can go to safely. Our next recognition is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Ms. Watlington?
Indigenous Peoples' Day is a holiday that celebrates and honors Native American peoples and commemorates their histories and cultures. It is celebrated across the United States on the second Monday in October. In 2018, North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper proclaimed the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in North Carolina. Cooper's proclamation states, "American Indians who have inhabited this land since long before their first contact with English settlers share their knowledge of the land and its resources, and have continued to play a vital role in the development of our local communities, the state of North Carolina, and the nation." Governor Cooper noted, "Our state has enjoyed a positive relationship with the Indigenous People of North Carolina and continue to grow in our shared progress. We honor and respect the heritage and the many cultural and economic contributions of our American Indian tribes and people." The MIT Museum joins North Carolina's celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day and embraces the idea of acknowledging the historic sacrifices of Indigenous people and their contributions to the United States. The museum is proud of its relationship with the Metro Atlanta Native American Association in presenting cultural history, heritage, dance, storytelling, and music during Native American Heritage Month. And with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas throughout the centuries, American Indians have shared their knowledge of land and resources while continuing to play a role in the development of the city of Charlotte, the state of North Carolina, and the nation, and whereas North Carolina is home to more than one hundred twenty-two thousand American Indians and has eight historic tribes legally recognized by the state of North Carolina, Kahari, Eastern Band of Cherokee, Halaasaponi, Lumbee, Maharan, Okanichi Banasaponi, Saponi, and Orkama Suin. And whereas the city of Charlotte enjoys a positive relationship with American Indian citizens, recognizes and encourages the acknowledgement of historic contributions and sacrifices of Indigenous people, and respects the cultural and economic contributions that American Indians have made, and whereas the city of Charlotte promotes the closing of the equity gap for Indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of Indigenous peoples, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor the nation's Indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was proposed in 1977 by a delegation of nations to the United Nations Sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, now therefore, by Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, does hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020, as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you very much. We have one more recognition that I'd like to make. It's pretty difficult because this one's close to many of us, but I wanted to just recognize the loss and passing of Judy Williams, who is a co-founder of Mothers of Murdered Offspring, and I'm sad to say that she passed of lung cancer this past Saturday. She founded Mothers of Murdered Offspring after her goddaughter, Shauna Hawk, was brutally raped and murdered by a serial killer in 1993, along with Dee Sumter, who was Shauna's mother, and Dave Howard, one of our fellow colleagues at the city council and currently working with Governor Cooper's office in transportation. They decided the best way to work through that grief was to help others who have been through something similar. Mothers of Murdered Offspring focuses on preventing violence, helping families of homicide victims through grief and substance abuse awareness. Their slogan, ever so fitting, is "In the Madness, Stop the Sadness." Now, Ms. Judy, who is also called Judge Judy after Elise Chin Gary and Dave, her son, made a celebration to have her sworn in as a judge in Mecklenburg County before she became too ill to see the expression of appreciation that this city has for her. You know, she was an amazing woman who took her grief in a way to comfort others, a way to give what would have been completely naturally to be consumed by her own pain, she gave that away. She had a mighty heart. She was a humanitarian with love and endurance. All of us think about her family today, and may she rest in love. You know, Mothers of Murdered Offspring staff is all volunteer. Lisa Crawford helped Ms. Judy in the last several years, and I would say this, that if, you know, we're coming to that time of year, it's the end of the year, that we begin to review where we are and where others aren't, and perhaps you would consider a financial contribution to Mothers of Murdered Offspring because it's always needed. They're always out there doing the memorials for people. Think about it, honoring Ms. Judy and all that she's done for this community. Please support the organization that she founded and take the time to donate so that other people can step up and fill her shoes to make sure that her legacy lives on. So with that, to Dave and the entire family, we say we're going to miss her, but we're not going to forget her. So thank you very much for this moment to recognize Judy Williams, founder of Mother, Mother of Murdered Offspring. So with that, we'll continue the meeting. It sometimes pales what goes on in our community against sometimes what we spend our time talking about. And if we really focused on the greatest needs of our constituents, that's outside of this building. It's outside of what we do procedurally. It's about what we get to do to make an impact. So as we are elected officials in this city and looking forward to having a plan around community safety, around the stopping of domestic violence, about building communities and corridors that everyone would be proud to live in, I think sometimes it does take a moment for us to step back and think about the people that we represent and how much they give and what they get about doing just by going out every day and doing it. So with that, let's go to the consent agenda items, eighteen through twenty-fourty-five. I think Mr. Mitchell asked a question about item twenty-four. Mr. Jones, do we have a response?
We'll just get Marie back in the room, Mayor.
All right. Oh, Angela's at the podium. This is, Ms. Charles, can you hear us? And the question, could you respond? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, Angela Charles, Charlotte Water Director. Thank you for the questioning, Councilmember Mitchell. We do have an apprenticeship component to this particular contract. The Contractor State Utilities has agreed to partner with Charlotte Water with two apprentices, and then after the apprenticeship period is done, those two individuals will have the opportunity to be employed by the contractor or be employed through the city's pipeline program.
Mr. Mitchell?
You go, girl.
All right, Ms. Charles, I think you did pretty well on that one. So do I have a...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
With, with items eighteen through forty-five, with the exception of thirty-one and forty?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Eggleston, second by Mr. Driggs. All right, let's do a roll call vote here. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Um, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
Say yes.
All right, that's six. Is there anyone that objects to this motion? Hearing no objections, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda?
Eleven.
I'm sorry, what did you say? I got to get through all the tabs of the consent items first. Here we go. We have several public hearings. The first item is item eleven, Agenda item eleven, a public hearing on a resolution to close a portion of North Myers Street. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Let's start with, to close the motion, Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Is there anyone that objects to this motion to close a public hearing? Hearing no one in objection, it's passed unanimously. Item number twelve, a public hearing on I-455 and Arrowood Road, voluntary annexation area. Anyone sign up to speak?
Motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead, any discussion? All right, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, all right, is there anyone that objects to closing of this public hearing? Hearing no objection, so the motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, a public hearing on North Lake Center Parkway, Northeast Area Voluntary Annexation. Are there any speakers?
No, ma'am. Motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Is there anyone who opposes this public hearing? Hearing no one in opposition, it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the city manager's report.
I thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have my thirty-day memo for you, but before that, I just wanted to bring up one item to get guidance from council. As we talked about the CARES funds last Monday, we also discussed that there may be opportunities to redeploy the funds within some of the existing areas. So I do have some additional news as it relates to CMS hotspots. Based on the CMS Foundation being able to raise more money, as well as more collections from the private sector, and, and unexpected initially when this started, state contribution, the million dollars that you've set aside for those hotspots, they really need only about half a million of it. However, there is an opportunity, and I believe it still falls under the umbrella, but I would not move forward with this without having this discussion with you, is it specifically the school system has a need for iPads for approximately twelve hundred pre-K students in Mecklenburg County. So if we just had the five hundred thousand that was deployed for the hotspots, that would cover what was initially presented to you. If you want to use the entire million, which I would recommend, there's an opportunity for twelve hundred iPads for pre-K students that would go to CMS schools.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mitchell, a second by Mr. Eggleston. Is there any discussion? All right, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. And I'm thrilled to hear that the campaign is going so well and the community is stepping up to help bridge this really difficult divide for our schools' children. But the, the pre-K children go back to school, correct? They're going back, aren't they going back full-time?
Yes.
And so what, what is the need for the iPads?
There was, and Sharon Heath may have to bail me out of missing this, but they have a gap. Without this, there would have to be some additional fundraising or some additional contribution from the private sector. contribution from the private sector to meet the need for about 1,200 pre-K students that are going back.
Is this the Mecklenburg pre-K program that's funded by the county, along with donations and contributions?
Yes.
Oh, I see Mr. Heath is up here. The, well, the only reason I ask is, A, I just,
yes, Sean, if you could give us a little better explanation of that, because that sounds like a need that would have been there even without the pandemic. Is that right? And then just the other thing is, can, is there, has there been any other requests that have not come up or have not been put forward that we would want to hold back just a little bit of that 500,000? I had an opportunity to talk to Sil Gonzo about the situation with Hispanic students, and so my only, I know we've got to get this money spent, but is there any reason to just say, hold back 100,000 to find out, to just flush out the need for some of the structural problems with having children? Get some assistance online.
Sure. Mayor Protem, as you may recall, last week, there was $2 million set aside for the YMCA.
Oh, right.
It went down to a million and 750. So it's a quarter of a million dollars that we still can deploy for issues related to the digital divide.
That's right. Okay, okay.
So, so my question is...
Well, can I make sure, I'm sorry, can I make sure that I didn't misspeak with Sean?
Oh, Sean? We can't hear you.
Sean, make sure your microphone is green, please.
There we go.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Uh-huh.
My apologies. I was actually in transit, Mayor Protem, as you were asking your question. Sorry to ask you to repeat it again.
Sure. I just wanted to know, because my understanding is the pre-K kids are going back full-time. So is this a need for iPads in the classroom? And is that something that would have been needed even without the pandemic?
It's a mixed bag. There are student, pre-K students in the classroom. Some parents have elected to go down the path towards remote learning. And I think there's also a desire to be proactive, given the likelihood that there could be some pre-K programs that are forced into temporary closure scenarios, rather than be in a situation where the community is scrambling to try and get technology in the hands of pre-K students. This seemed like a compelling opportunity to take care of that on the front end.
And so this request came from CMS?
Yes. This was a high priority request from CMS Foundation and led to the fact that there is not a need for the full $1 million associated with the hotspots that Manager Jones mentioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Driggs?
I will support the manager's recommendation. I just want to caution us not to get ourselves identified as a funding source for CMS. I mean, there are people that ask why we can't help. It's not our lane. And there are other elected officials, many of them, who are responsible for the schools. So I would hate to kind of have this broaden into a dialogue about what other needs they have that we might be able to meet. Thank you.
Mr. Bakari?
Thanks. I'll also support this, your recommendation, but I would also add that I feel like the strategy is like fluid. I would prefer to have a better understanding of the holistic problem that we are attacking. Clearly, the COVID impacts, clearly the digital divide, clearly pre-K. I mean, like for us to have talked about for several weeks one problem, that problem was always hazy to me. That problem's ratcheted down, and now we've got another opportunity. I just feel like there's plenty of noble causes out there. Half a million bucks isn't a small amount of money. So, so I'll support it, but I think we need to get a little more tight on like the holistic strategy of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay. So with that...
Ms. Johnson has a question.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I would also agree with Councilmember Driggs and Councilmember Bakari. I know that initially we were told there were 16,000 students that didn't have access to the internet. Then we found out that number is less. Now we know that the pre-K students are going back to school. So I support the digital divide, but I'd like to know if the individuals in Kent City, have we resolved that problem? Do all of those individuals who might be able to look for jobs, do they have access to the internet? So I just, I know that there are needs, and I don't, I don't mean to extend, you know, this problem or the discussion, but I just want us to ensure that we are looking at the city's needs holistically, if we have money that we need to spend. There are needs, I think, that are, that might be greater than four and five euros and getting an iPad. That's just my thought. So, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
And so Mayor and council, just a little bit more clarification. So I did have the conversation with Sonia Gant, who's led this effort, as well as Michael Marzicano, with Sean and Ryan Bergman, our Budget Director, on Friday. And Sonia's presenting tomorrow, and it would have been a presentation of just a half a million dollars. I asked, but she did say there was this additional need. So if, I don't believe that it's, that you have to vote on this tonight. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there's this other opportunity out there. But tomorrow, the approval would have been just a half a million dollars of city funds, and I didn't want you to be caught blindsided that what you thought could be a million was only a half.
Well, I think we have a motion on the floor, and I've heard support. I've heard some questions that we can learn from and do more, but I think that we still have a motion on the floor and a second. So is there any other comment? Hearing no other comment. All in favor of the motion? Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Is there anyone who objects to this motion? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimously. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Grant for Single Family Affordable Housing Rehabilitation and Preservation. I have to say thank you to the Lowe's offices here. I like it when I hear their commercials and they say, "in the Charlotte area." But they have donated, now I shouldn't say donated. I need to say that the city applied over 18 months ago through the Lowe's Foundation for a grant to support our rental rehab, our home rehab program, not rental rehab, but home rehab program. And they have approved the grant in the amount of 1.3 million from their foundation for the Safe Home Rehab Program. And the motion is to accept the grant and adopt a budget ordinance from Lowe's for the Neighborhood Development Grants Fund.
Motion to accept the motion.
I hear unanimous approval already. So somebody, Mr. Driggs and Mr. Graham made a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Good program, Madam Mayor. Funds will be well used in our community, and Lowe's has helped us before, so this is yet another opportunity to work with them.
So I think that they saw this program as, for the housing along Beatty's Ford Road Corridor, as a way to keep people in their homes and perhaps avoid some of the gentrification that we're seeing along that corridor, close to the Five Points area. So with no further discussion, Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Is there anyone that objects to this motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next item is appropriation of the CATS COVID Fund, release funding to approve a contract in the amount of 1.2 million for the bus operator protective barriers for one year, and authorizing the manager to execute a necessary contracts and agreements related to this effort, and to adopt the budget ordinance appropriating 55 million from the CARES Act Fund and the CATS COVID Fund.
Motion to approve, authorize, and adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Is there anyone in opposition to this motion? Hearing no one in opposition, the motion passes unanimously. The next item is the U.S. Department of Justice FY2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, authorizing the mayor to accept a four-year FY2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $544,000 from the Department of Justice.
Motion to authorize.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Is there anyone that would have any objection to this motion? Mr. Winston? Votes nay. All right, the motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and have a second. All in favor, say yes. Get me out of here. So Mayor Protem, Ms. Ashmira, Mr. Bakari, Mr. Driggs, Mr. Eggleston, Mr. Graham, I'll vote yes. All right. So that motion passes unanimously. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.